Okay, you all welcome everyone to our 27 July council meeting. If we come to order please, I will do the invocation, Councilman Southall will lead the pledge if we could all stand. Gracious God, we praise you and thank you for our city, our state, and our nation. Please guide us tonight, we ask in your name, amen.
If you want me to pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first agenda item is special presentations, and Mr. Manager, you want to introduce the person?
I would be pleased to. Members of council and hopefully the whole community is aware, Pecosin is the place, that is the central theme of our community marketing and outreach piece. And because we have very gifted people that help us, and one of those gifted people is Angela Ward-Costello, we're fortunate that we were able to reuse and make constructive new use out of every piece of product we have. So, this Costello has redone our stock video, marketing our city and telling our story, and requests an opportunity to come and share that with the community and with you.
Okay.
And there she is.
I think he's introduced it very well. Basically, all that aerial footage that we took, we have several hours that we haven't really used yet, but many of you have been in presentations that I've given to either veterans groups or civic organizations showing that footage, because people love to see their community from a completely different perspective. So this particular video was done as a revamp of the residential realty element. Once a year, the city of Pecosin invites the realtors in the area to come here, and we want to make sure that they're equipped with the message of who Pecosin is, and the types of resources that we have here, and really the beauty of our community. So I hope you enjoy it.
Pecosin, home to just over 12,000 residents and more than 87 miles of beautiful waterway. Pecosin is a community that features both new developments and established neighborhoods that all have a common goal, a better way of life, a life with a sense of hometown charm, beauty, security, and opportunity. With more than 80% of citizens in Pecosin owning their own homes, there's a sense of community pride that comes with living in Pecosin. As a result, Pecosin has received its share of owners as a city. National publications like Bloomberg Businessweek reported that Pecosin was one of the best investments as an affordable suburb, not only in Virginia, but in the United States. CNBC reported that Pecosin was one of the top 10 perfect suburbs in America. And Pecosin continues to be honored as one of the safest communities in the nation, thanks to our dedicated local police, firefighters, and citizens. Pecosin also enjoys the convenience of a solid community, with unique shopping and professional services that Pecosin businesses have to offer. The quality of service and products found here in Pecosin is a lucrative attraction to the more than 40,000 people in our natural market area. People truly enjoy the ease and friendliness of shopping in Pecosin. The commitment and opportunity to expand business here is inspiring. As a community, we enjoy the ease and accessibility to City Hall and its leadership. Another reason Pecosin is the place to live is that it's a wonderful place to raise a family. Pecosin is passionate about achievement and active responsibility, with a more learning schools of teachers, musicians, and athletes. As a community, we enjoy well-equipped educational facilities, libraries, and recreation facilities. Pecosin public schools have been ranked among the nation's best, ranked higher than 81% of all public schools in America, and one of the absolute best in Virginia. As a community, we celebrate civic activities and civic groups and organizations. We also celebrate once a year with our annual Pecosin Seafood Festival, that's one of the best in the state. When Pecosin residents return home from work each day, they commute an average of about 21 minutes from places like Newport New Shipbuilding, Riverside Regional Medical Center, Cannon, NASA, and Langley Air Force Base. Pecosin is located at Easy Street, 7 lines, United States 64, and just a mile or so from NASA Island. When you choose to live in Pecosin, it's a conscious decision, not just for a house, but for a place to call home, a place to enjoy life and the beauty of a community that welcomes you and your family. Pecosin is the place to live and you're invited.
Angela, we really do appreciate all the good work you do for us. Okay, the next item was a certificate of appreciation, but I don't see the person. So we will go to the report on the fire carnival. Diane?
Ms. Diane Holloway.
Good evening Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Pecosin Ladies Auxiliary. The Ladies Auxiliary was founded in 1955, and so this makes it our 60th anniversary. So we figured that there was no better time than this year to bring back our annual fire carnival. The carnival this year will be held behind Fire Station Number One on Pecosin Avenue, as well as on the school grounds of the elementary school. It'll be Friday evening, August the 14th, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and then again on Saturday, August 15th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Friday night will begin with traditional-type carnival rides, games, including a train ride that will accommodate 16 passengers. Inflatables, craft vendors, Captain Harold's Seafood Kitchen will be there to serve their seafood, as well as the Ladies Auxiliary will be selling hot dog meals, candy, popcorn. We will also have a street dance at night from 6:00 to 10:00 PM featuring Crazy X Band, which is a very popular local band. On Saturday, we will be adding a cakewalk, a go fish game where the participants will get to take home live goldfish. The Ladies Auxiliary general store booth where we'll be having handmade items and gently used items. A dunking booth where carnival guests will get a chance to dunk local police officers, firefighters, ministers, and even a couple of members of council that have bravely volunteered. And for you members of council that are sitting there thinking that you missed your opportunity, you have not, don't worry, we still have spaces available if you'd like to volunteer. Saturday morning, we'll also start off with the Island Durets performing, and throughout the afternoon and evening, we will have live bands entertaining back-to-back that have all generously volunteered their time. We will be having a baby contest, which is one of the traditions of the fire carnival, along with a little sparky contest, a junior sparky, and we'll finish off that evening with fire king and queen competition. As of now, we do not have a contestant for fire king, but we're still taking applications if anyone is interested. We'll also be giving away $5,000 cash on Saturday evening after the fire king and queen competition. We'll be selling the raffle tickets for $10 each, or three for $25. First place will be a prize of $2,500, the second prize will be $1,500, and the third prize will be $1,000. So you have a chance, three chances to win with one ticket purchase. All of the rules and the applications for the pageants can be downloaded from the city website if you go to Pecosin Fire, Rescue, and then Ladies Auxiliary tab, everything is there, or they can be picked up from Parks and Recreation. Any additional information and contact numbers, we have on our Facebook pages, which we keep updated, they are, there's two of them, one is just the Pecosin Fire Company Ladies Auxiliary, and the second one is Pecosin Fire Carnival. And thank you for your time, and we hope you all come out and join us. Have any questions?
Any questions? We do appreciate all the work that the Ladies Auxiliary does.
Thank you very much.
This is going to be awesome.
It will be. Mr. Manager, I think you're next on the agenda.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor, just a couple of folks to introduce to you. I think all council members have met her at this point, but Maggie, come on forward. Where is she? I saw her earlier, maybe she left. Did she go? All right, she had to leave. All right, Maggie's not here. And Casey, are you here? She's not here either? All right, we'll roll on.
Okay, that gets us down to the audience for visitors. Anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council, bring any problem, anything, please come forward. Introduce yourself, tell us where you live, please. And this is for other than the two public hearings.
My name is Scott Colton, I live at 9 Timber Lane on Roberts Creek. I've purchased the house two years ago from the late Mr. Tant, some of you may know him, or did know him. I own a peninsula that is on Roberts Creek and faces the mouth opening into the Pecosin River. And I'm addressing the city council this evening to ask permission to make Roberts Creek a no-wake zone. In the two years that I've lived there, I've noticed considerable amount of boat traffic, which even since the first year, the second year, it's steadily increased. And I have a 13-year-old daughter who loves to swim in the creek, I can't barely keep her out of it, she's rather a fish. For those of you that are familiar with Roberts Creek, there is a large sandbar at the very mouth opening, and there's a very narrow channel that weaves in and through the creek. The point of my property extends out to such that the channel literally is probably within five feet of my property line, or the property, which also, if I'm not mistaken, is protected wetlands. And I was, in researching this, I noticed, and I had to speak to somebody from the Department of Inland Game and Fisheries, that they had said that this had to be addressed to the city council first and then goes to them. I was rather surprised that it already wasn't a no-wake zone, or there was no established sign stating so. But I see a lot of jet skis come in that I don't even necessarily believe are residents of Roberts Creek, that come in through the mouth opening, zip around, and then leave, and then of course, you know, fishing boats that are leaving, and they're leaving full throttle along through Roberts Creek, even around the tip of the point, literally feet from the protected wetlands. So the problems that I see, and the reason that I'm asking for it to become at least a no-wake zone, is not to ask the city council to enforce it, but at least to allow to us to put a buoy or a sign posting as such to alert the boaters and the kayakers and whatnot that it is a no-wake zone. And then if anything else needs to be handled, at least we can talk to the boaters individually, the residents probably. I've spoke to a lot of the residents in the area and on the water, and there is one that happens to be here tonight, but, and they've all been in agreement. I didn't see the necessity of starting a petition or anything like that when the majority of the people have agreed with me. But it was just curious as to understand, and I've been speaking to, I think Ms. Wiggins from the clerk, she's told me that this has been brought up to the city council in the past three or four times, and I was curious as to know why this wasn't allowed in the past, and really was kind of baffled by it, especially when you have swimmers and people hanging out at the sandbar, and now you've got paddle, stand-up paddleboards and things and such, and more kayakers, that the boating traffic's only increased, but yet I didn't see the problem with having a no-wake zone. There's a few areas as to reasons why, number one, I'm seeing erosion on even the wetlands due to the boat traffic. I know that there's a lot of wildlife, I don't know exactly how it's impacting them, but there is a ton of wildlife between herons and ducks and whatnot around that area. And then of course, the safety issue with the swimmers, the kayakers, the paddleboarders, those kind of things. And that's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other, other speakers? Yes, sir. Please, please come up to the mic so that everyone can hear you, please.
My name is Nick Adah, I live on one of the branches of Roberts Creek near Scott, and I just want to add to what he said. Some of the branches are really quite narrow on the creek, and it's my understanding that boaters are supposed to travel at a no-wake speed when they're within 50 feet of a pier or a dock, and many boaters do not do that coming into our creek. I'd say between my side of the creek and Scott's side of the creek, we probably have about 100, 120 feet, and there are water crafts that come in full throttle. Certainly think a no-wake sign could be a reminder that they should be proceeding more slowly. All I wanted to add.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get your name.
Last name is Odeh, A-U-D-E-H.
Okay, other, all right, well we will close the audience for visitors then, and go into approval of the minutes. The regular session for June 22nd?
Vice Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for the regular session of June 22nd, 2015.
Okay, motion and a second, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And the work session, please.
Vice Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the work session of the same day.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Freeman. Mr. Vice Mayor, we, the vote passed by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, that gets us to public hearings. The first one is request for Fountains of Pecosin for conditional use permit for a before/after school care and recreational use.
Kevin, Kevin White will be the staff.
Thank you Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler. The city has received a request from the Fountains of Pecosin LLC for a conditional use permit to establish a before and after-school care use with a recreational component within the Fountains of Pecosin Development on Alpha Street. You may recall several years ago, I believe it was in 2012, Mr. Bob Moses got several conditional use permits for that site to construct three separate mixed-use buildings. The first floor, which will consist of a commercial use in each of those buildings, and the subsequent floors would be apartment dwellings, approximately 24 in total. The site is located directly south of the Pecosin Commons Shopping Center and directly west of the Langley Federal Credit Union Building, and the site's approximately two acres or so. Here's a zoning map of the property. The property is Zoned Village Commercial, which is that gray, almost beige color, directly across the street from the B2 District and immediately west of the General Commercial, which are very similar use set there. A use of this nature is not permitted specifically within the Village Commercial District. The Village Commercial District is very specific and specialized in the types of uses that are permitted, mostly small retail shops, specialized retail shops, restaurants, low-impact uses, uses that don't generate necessarily a ton of traffic, and are much more compatible for those who would use foot traffic. The applicant's proposal, they would utilize approximately 1,000 square feet of the 2,800 square feet of the first floor of Building One, the one that's currently under construction on the site. The primary times of activity during the school year would be between those key kind of drop-off times and pickup times for school-age children, so 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. During the summer months, camps would be held, however, a lot of those activities would actually take place off-site, take field trips, things of that nature, and they wouldn't necessarily be within the building. It's our understanding that no onsite food preparation will take place, they'll bring lunches or have lunches prepared and brought in. The occupancy for this specific use would be limited due to the size. I think it's important to note as well, in accordance with the Commonwealth Department of Social Services, which regulates these types of use, the ratio for school-age children is one staff person for 18, to keep that in mind. It's our understanding that approximately 20 to 25 kids would be utilizing the site, at least on the onset. Additionally, the use would have age-appropriate table games, air hockey, pool, ping pong. And during the weekends and weekdays outside of the normal operation hours, the space may be rented for the hosting of special events. That's why we were careful to advertise this with a special recreational use component, because that's something that while the school-age use is in session, certainly understandable, but this is, could also offer an event space that we don't have currently within the city, outside of the city-owned rec center. Here's a rendering of the building that was provided at the time of approval. Here's an older picture of the website, this was certainly after Sandy passed by, and some parking took place on the out parcel of Pecosin Commons, but this is, most of those trees behind Langley Federal are having cleared, and construction has started on the site, but that site looking directly across Alpha Street, you can see a small sign across that is where this use would take place. Staff has come up with three conditions for your consideration if you opt to approve it. One, the use must comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. If at any time this use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, the city council may revoke this permit. This one's a little longer, so bear with me. The use permit shall be used solely for the establishment of a before-and-after-school care center, recreational use for school-aged children, and shall not be interpreted for use of a business that cannot be classified as such, including any other entertainment, amusement use that is, that cannot be considered an accessory of the proposed use as outlined within the submitted application. Any other use not specifically permitted within the property, zoning district shall require a separate use permit, and if at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, this permit shall become null and void. This is consistent with our non-conforming use provisions and the zoning ordinance. Lastly, last Monday, the planning commission met to consider this application and by a vote of six to zero are recommending its approval to you all. Can I answer any questions you may have?
Any questions, Kevin?
Just one, Kevin, do you know if they plan, you know, when I think about childcare and summer programs, are there going to be outside activities associated with this?
It's our understanding that there's not going to be at this site anyway. They will maybe go down to Kids Island and play there, but not onsite for this particular use.
Is this activity going to be considered one of the business opportunities on the first floor?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I just have a piece of advice, having dealt with caterers and, you know, renting out halls and as well as preschool, I was involved in running a preschool once. While you say that there won't be food, no food preparation will take place onsite, I would have no problem removing that phrase because, and I would encourage you to have the facilities so that that could be done, so that if somebody wanted to rent your area, they have the facilities to do so. There's issues about running a certain amount of water and sinks and refrigeration and all that, so that's just a thought for you. And I would have no problem removing that line, so that he would have the option if he wanted to.
That line right now is not within one of their conditions, so that was just how the application was submitted to us.
Yeah, I was going to add, follow up and say, why was that put in there in the first place?
He just doesn't want to right now.
Okay, any other questions or?
Was Bob going to say something?
The only reason I asked the question about outside activities, and I know they're not planned, but with that many children, you can't keep your eyes on them all the time, and with the proximity of that wet BMP, I'm wondering if we ought to have a condition to fence that BMP, because all it takes is one kid to get loose and get in that, because that's just a natural invitation for kids.
Big magnet.
They're school-aged kids though.
A big, calm body of water, they want to get in it.
Yeah, I agree with your comment, Mr. Green, about the pond. At some point, we need to consider what liability the city-owned pond, or the, excuse me, EDA-owned pond poses for the fountains. So that's maybe a good time to start discussing that. The reason there's no onsite food preparation is that side of the building getting set up for cooking. The restaurant's on the other side, so we thought it'd be easier to at least provide the facilities to clean up from a commissary perspective, but not do any cooking and have grease interceptors.
A lot of times you just can't serve it though, if you're renting it out, just so you know that.
And here's Sherry, she's the.
Hi, everybody, how are you this evening? My name is Sherry McPherson, and I'm the owner, trying to get this set up. What we mean, in the mornings after parents are dropped off on a typical summer day, we leave the facility about 10:00 AM. Mondays would be the zoo day or the Virginia Living Museum, so forth, so forth. Tuesdays, we have reservations at Spare Time Bowling Alley or up in Yorktown. We'll be gone by 10:00 again, because we like to stop at the parks. I like to visit different parks in the area, and it's always worked out well with the children. Pretty much after drop-off, we're gone, and then we don't come back until 4:00. We will go bowling on Tuesdays, Wednesdays we will utilize Pecosin Pool, I have a contract set up with Gretchen during the summers where she honors that. Thursdays, we go roller skating at Plaza Roller Rink, and again, we're gone, and then we don't come back till 4:00. When we do come back in the evening times at 4:00, a lot of times the parents start to pick up between 4:00 and 5:00. We have pool tables, ping pong, things set up inside for the children to play with, so they won't be running around outside unsupervised at all at any time. We have arts and crafts, and we have board games. I have looked into also renting other little activities for them, but they will be completely occupied in that hour and a half time that we're actually at. Now during the school year, when they, by the time most of them arrive, it's already 4:00 PM. We have enough time to give them snack, sit them down, get homework completed, and then again, we're back to, you know, interacting with each other. The whole ideal and the process behind this is for the kids who are transitioning, not old enough to be home by themselves, but they don't want to go to a daycare center, although we have some very nice daycare centers in this area. They're more for the younger kids who haven't started yet. I really think that Pecosin needs a little extra help with this area, and it would be nice on the weekends too, for parents to be able to rent the facility for birthday parties. With the sound system and the music, it'd be a nice area to have a birthday party, you could, my staff member, I'd have somebody on staff to help them through and to make sure everything ran smoothly. It just seems like it would be an all-around win-win situation for everybody, but at no time, even in the mornings when the kids go to the bus stop, which is the bus stop we have arranged for, will they be alone, not at any point. And I do have vans I've leased for this facility to get them to and from on those really special, beautiful days, we'll take them over to Kids Island. That's not a problem, it'll utilize kids. That's not a problem, it'll utilize Kids Island. And they can also help volunteer with cleaning up and doing things like that around there, because at their age, they need the time. So that's what we've come to you to ask for, and if you could prove this, that's exactly what we plan to do, and I think it would be helpful for the kids.
Potential employees, we have?
In the beginning, four, and I want to hire Pecosa. I prefer to stay within the city. Eventually, I would like to move forward in Bob's third phase, but that's all down the line, to expand. If we do well with this, expand it out. I am interested in Pecosa kids, and this is a really good opportunity for a high school-age, 11th grade, 12th grade child, gets close to home, a lot of them can ride their bikes up there where they're located, and it's after-school hours, and it's not weekends, unless they want to sign up to work my parties on the weekend. I also want to present things like Parents' Day Out, Evening Out, Black Friday, open up for the parents who want to go get some shopping done and take the kids to, I'll take your kids to the movies and feed them pizza, and you guys have a nice Evening Out, so Santa Claus can come to your house without them knowing what's going on. So it's going to be a nice environment, smoke-free, hazard-free. We put together quite a curriculum for the kids. I ran a really nice curriculum last summer for Funshine Daycare Center, and it went really smoothly. The kids were exhausted, I got a lot of positive feedback from the parents. Their kids were in bed by 7:00 o'clock every night, they couldn't get over that. So they're not going to be sitting down, and they're going to be interacting, and they're not going to be on their cell phones, they're not going to be on the Xboxes, we're not going to do TV. That would be maybe a backup emergency in case it poured down rain, but then, there's other things to do on the peninsula, we're not just stuck inside.
What are the age groups that you'll be serving?
Five years old to 13 or 14. I'm still debating the 14-year-olds, I'm looking at them as maybe more of a CIT counselors and training where the parents can, and I'm certified where I can do their babysitting course for them for free if they work for me over the summer, and then their parents don't have to pay for them, they don't wedge into my numbers, and that would give them an opportunity for responsibility and hopefully grow up and become an employee.
So there's no preschool age change?
No, sir, no, sir, at all. This is going to be strictly, the kids that age need something, just for them, where they're not sharing it with little kids, and so they can interact with each other. And I'd like to split primary and elementary, one half of the room will be primary on this side and elementary on the other, and if some middle schoolers are mixed in, we have the van. I know the school is limited on the bus system after school, so we can provide after-school transportation for the band students, for the kids who do the, because they have the gym stuff after school and the art club, and we can go over to middle school and do a pickup run. And that helps a lot with the parents, too, I believe. So that's what we're proposing this evening, and I appreciate your time. Is there any more questions?
Any other question? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, consideration by council? Oh, we got to open the public hearing. Any comments from the public about this? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go to consideration by council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution to approve an additional use permit to establish a before-and-after-school-care facility, the summer camp programs, and year-round recreational activities on property located at 200 Fountains Lane, Pecosa Tax Map Parcel Number 27100004.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Yes, please.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you. And that gets us down to public hearing number two, which is renewal of Cox Cable Franchise.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd be glad to summarize this, I would also note Mr. Stark is here. Stark, raise your hand from Cox if you have questions or suggestions for him. To also include members of the public, this used to be a lot more exciting when I first got in the business, more than a couple, two decades ago. During the course of those two decades, federal decisions and one significant state decision have really limited the practical effect of what this is, to be honest. A cable franchise is not an internet franchise, even if they're running the same line. It's also not a phone franchise. It's not about channels, except in the most basic element, and it's not about cost. What it is about is about customer service, it's about extension and extension policies, and we're in a city that is relatively built out, so it's not the same kind of issue that a olive white might have. We have a competitor, the competitor, I think, is generally, the competition has been good for the market, Stark may disagree, but I think generally speaking, both companies are doing well, and they force each other to be even better. We also, the state changed the rules a few years ago relating to the fees that the locality gets pursuant to the use of its public rights of way, so we don't have the ability to negotiate that either. So it is still very important, it sets the rules and customer service expectations, but our flexibility in negotiation has been largely stripped from us. Having said that, in every one of these hearings I've ever participated in, where citizens had suggestions about programming and other thing, regardless of the cable company, they're near 100% in listening and facilitating those suggestions, so if there are folks here that have suggestions, I am sure Mr. Stark is here listening and will do what he can to make that happen, correct, Mr. Stark?
Absolutely.
Well, with that, being that the federal and state have taken all powers from us, I'll ask for a public comment. No public comment?
Mr. Stark?
Just a few words, good evening, members of council, Vice Mayor. My name is Barrett Stark, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Cox Communications. Definitely appreciate you allowing me to come and speak before you just for a quick moment tonight, for your thoughts on the consideration of this franchise renewal. Cox Communications definitely appreciates the opportunity to continue to serve the city of Pecosa and its residents. We've been doing this for about 15 years, if you look at the previous franchise agreement, and as Mr. Wheeler said, there's not a lot of things that can be done, but there are a lot of great things you'll find in this franchise agreement that allow us to continue to provide the level of service that we've been providing so far, including the, I don't think you mentioned the EG channels, that the city does continue to have their own channels, and with an option to actually get an additional channel.
Turn around, Barrett, can actually see yourself on one of them up there.
There you go, there you go, slight delay. So yes, I definitely want to highlight the great work of the city's staff, Mr. Wheeler and the folks in his office have done a great job working with us on this. It was a real cooperative effort, we did a lot of hard work to kind of get through this and make sure we had the language set up the way it was best for everybody. It does make some updates based on legal changes that have occurred and also the competitive environment that Mr. Wheeler mentioned, but overall, we think it provides a real strong framework to allow us to continue to provide service to the citizens. Again, happy to answer any questions you have.
Question?
I have a question. Does Cox provide free Wi-Fi in other locations on behalf of the city?
I'm not aware of any free Wi-Fi that we provide, we do have Wi-Fi hotspots that we have for some of our, for our customers up in Northern Virginia. We have some Wi-Fi hotspots that we've got available for existing customers, but it's not a free Wi-Fi.
Is that something that could be?
In this, no, because cable is not internet.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
But we're always looking for opportunities to expand, for sure, absolutely.
But they could provide it.
Right, which is what I'm saying.
I understand that.
Okay, other questions or comments?
And I understand, Randy, from reading this, this is a 10-year?
Yes, sir.
Franchise?
Yes, sir.
It's great to do a 10-year, because it allows us to update it more frequently. The original one was a 15-year agreement, that obviously some changes happened, this does a lot better job allowing us to update it later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, consideration by council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance granting renewal of the cable franchise with Cox Communications Hampton Road LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Point out that this dispenses with the second reading.
Second, please.
Dispense with the second reading.
Oh, okay.
The second reading. Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And that gets us to new business, and the only item there is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Best Repair Company Incorporated for the heating and air conditioning system, I guess, in this building plus three others?
Yes, sir.
And I think we could agree that we need some in this building.
There's no question.
Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Beach is here, if you care to hear from him, but I would just make a note for our HVAC system in many buildings, including this one, are beyond their design useful life, so we do rely both on Mr. Beach and companies of this type to continue to stretch it beyond its design life, and should you approve this, hopefully, we can stretch it at least one more season. Jim, would you like to come forward and say anything? Good night. Okay, Jim's wearing his jacket, I just want to make sure he saw it.
And glasses.
I think he borrowed that from Kevin. He meant well, huh?
I'll be happy to answer any questions. We did save a substantial amount of money on this quote over what we have been paying, almost $8,000 on a yearly contract, it's a two-year contract, can be renewed for a third year if both parties agree.
Any other questions?
That's a big one.
Yep. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Best Repair Company Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Wiggins?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Ayer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Now, Jim, I'll let you off with what I was saying, thanks, we appreciate your presentation. Okay, we're down to comments by the city manager.
Not too much this evening, sir, just wanted to say thank you to my staff and also to council. I was on vacation last week, appreciate everybody that made that catastrophe free for me, and suggestion, should you ever leave Pecosa, which I'm not recommending, but if you ever do it, Lake Gasman is the place to go, because there are places on the lake where your cellphone does not work at all. You can get email, text messages, or phone, and it is in fact the greatest place I've ever been to for that reason. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, I'm going to start with Councilman Southall.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Angela Ward Costello for her, once again, excellent video presentation advertising our city. She did an excellent job on the first one, and she did an even better job on this one, so we really do appreciate that. I'd like to thank Scott Coltrane and Mr. Otte for their coming out to make their civic comments, which are going to be considered, they've been considered in the past. My understanding in the past was that we didn't have any control over the waterways, and that's the reason it wasn't done in the past, the city can't authorize those, that has to come, I think, from VMRC.
Yeah, there's a procedure.
Maybe speaking out of turn, but that's what I understand from the previous times, and so I don't think the city has any authority there. I'd like to thank Jim Beach, Ellen, Kevin, and Debbie for their excellent support of the city council meeting, they do first-class work as always, and Randy, you for leading that team.
Okay, Councilwoman Crawford?
He, Councilman Southall mentioned a lot of things, I was going to say. I will add, though, that if the city can facilitate any discussion with whoever's in charge of no-wake zones, I think we should be happy to do so. But I recall the same thing, that we were unable to do anything about it last time we were asked.
Councilman Vernal?
Two things, one, I'm keenly aware of the wake issue in Roberts Creek, since I live right at the mouth of it, and I think most of the problems occur from jet skis, because anybody trying to come out of that creek at a full speed is risking life, limb, and propeller because of the sandbars that are right at the very mouth of the thing. You certainly would hope people would understand that taking it easy is a better way to go. But the other thing, just to follow up on what Mr. Green said, when the fountains develop more and people are living there, and if some of them have children, I think there's a real concern about that pond back there. You know, it was a real tragedy that happened over on the south side when a little boy chased a ball into one and drowned. He was not tot, he was, I think, five, six years old, so it's something that I think is going to need to be looked at as the development goes, and what sort of safety measures we might possibly take.
I was going to ask a question about that, right there next to Champs, between where Ms. Nell used to live and Champs, we put that pond in there, and we put a big chain link around it. I don't know if the city did it, the state did it, or?
City did it.
City did it, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That was it.
Go ahead, Dr. Vernal.
That's it.
Oh, I was saying, okay. Councilman Green?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that, I think it's going to be a real safety issue, and I'm sure that their property line does not extend to that, so we couldn't make it a condition of this use permit, but I feel like it's going to be a real problem once that whole development takes hold with families living there and with the childcare center there. I know they say they watch them and they, I've had three of them, you can't watch all of them at the same time, and they will get away from you. And just to Randy's comment, Randy, I guess you were saying that you don't like to talk to us. You like to go somewhere where we can't call you.
That's really not what I was intending to say.
I just won't call you anymore.
Nick, you're welcome to visit, though. We have a pontoon boat, I needed a.
I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing.
The other thing, just to remind everybody that tomorrow is Food Bank Day, at 10:00 to 1:00 at the Old City Hall, the American Legion Post 273 is hosting it tomorrow, so if you're eligible, please come out, we will have plenty of food.
I just want to add, I did call Randy on vacation, he did get back to me, so you must not have been one of them little white areas, hiding away from me too far.
There was a place in the lake where all of a sudden, it all came.
Oh, Lord. I felt bad when I found you on vacation.
I'm sorry it took the two hours to get to that spot.
Yeah, we went there once.
That's true.
Appreciate everything Angela, you're doing to keep promoting the city, good stuff. The folks that spoke on behalf of the no-wake zone, I'm pretty positive that the city and city staff has heard you. I don't think they didn't hear you before, I think this has come up enough now that I'm sure the city manager and/or staff will give you some kind of direction to go in, as you certainly need some direction, where to go next, I know it's a concern. Looking forward to the Fire Carnival, I am one of the dummies in the dunk booth, so I'm not sure who the other one is, but it's for a good cause.
He didn't have a choice.
Right.
So it's a great cause, and I mean, the 60th anniversary, and this, as a kid growing up here, I, there was, we didn't have all the things we had to do today, the internet and all these activities that we had, so the Fire Carnival, it was it, and I'm telling you, it was, everybody looking forward to the Fire Carnival, so I'm pretty excited about myself, and I'm not sure if they still have an opening for King, but I might look at it. Anyway, it's going to be a good time. That's it.
I'll vote for you for King.
I appreciate it, I need all the help I can get.
Okay, now, I would like to ask the manager to look into the no-wake zone, we've done this previously, there is a process, I think it has to go to the game warden people, which are the freshwater side, and then to the VMRC, which is the saltwater side. We have no enforcement authority at all as a city, but if you would look into that.
Vice Mayor, if not in this week's weekly report, certainly next week.
Appreciate that. And the only other thing I had is I was going to explain about the OFL switch, it's on my phone. I'm going to have to go out of town.
You pay for my business phone, I think I need to keep it on.
Okay, any second thoughts, anybody?
Just one, it seems to me, and don't trust my memory, because I'm way too old to have one, but I think. because I'm way too old to have one, but I think the last few times this has come up, there is a no-wake sign prior to getting to Roberts Creek, and once you put one up, it extends forever.
Okay, a no-wake sign is just off, down where your mother lives, that little peninsula, what's it, Breezy Point? Is that what that's called? Just off Breezy Point.
But that wouldn't affect Roberts Creek.
And that's prior to, I mean, that's before, Roberts Creek's off to the right.
Yes, it is.
Then you get to the no-wake sign. Yeah.[1739.26]